Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining us today for this lunch and learn the small business bootcamp lunch and learn. This is not the normal hour that we do our bootcamps, but we've got a great presentation for you today. If you're new to the bootcamps, we've been with us before. We have a little slide deck that we're going to go through in some introductions. But before we jump into that, I'd like to first introduce myself. I'm Robert Theobald, Small Business On Buzzman and Vice President of Small Business Services at the Arizona Commerce Authority. And one thing we started doing, like to do is just ask participants to post in the chat where you're tuning in from. Like to see what parts of Arizona and even beyond are tuning into our bootcamp. So go ahead and post that in the chat. So you've got Cholo, Central Phoenix, Peoria, Yuma, Phoenix, Flagstaff, Casa Grande, Maricopa, Flagstaff, Tempe, Sierra Vista, Cholo, Tucson, Phoenix, Gilbert, Surprise, Yuma, Downtown Phoenix, Scottsdale, Tempe. All right, we got a wide range of people from all over the state, which is exciting. We're glad to have you with us today. So as we like to do, we like to thank our community partners. We could not do any of our lunch and learns, our regular bootcamps or workshops without all of our community partners, their time, their effort and their expertise. The Small Business Bootcamp, if you're new, is a webinar series that we do every Tuesday morning at nine AM along with other workshops and webinars such as today's lunch and learn. And they're designed to help businesses prepare, plan and grow. And in addition to the webinars, we have the content library. In all of our webinars and these lunch and learn workshops, we record them and we post those recordings and the slide decks and materials that the presenters may have in the content library. And you can go there and access the information at any time. You can share the links if you're a service provider and you're working with a client. You can share those links as well. If it's something you want them to go back and watch and do some homework with. So it's a great tool for business and service providers. Additionally, the ACA has a number of programs to support small businesses. The Career Ready is credential, the Arizona Nation Challenge, Arizona MEP, which is Manufacturing Extension Partnership for small to medium sized manufacturers. The Arizona State Trade Expansion Program for businesses looking to export into new markets. Arizona at Work and then Small Business Services. We have a number of these great programs. One of those programs is the Small Business Checklist. And this is an online interactive resource designed to help small businesses understand the commonly requested licensing, registration and compliance needs at the local, state and federal level. Now, this checklist is pretty in-depth. There's a lot of information and I will say, as we get into our presentation today, in the early stages of the process that you'll hear about, it actually links directly back to the checklist, which is really exciting. We've spent a lot of time working with the Business One Stop team on integrating that. So it's a great tool. And then lastly, we wanted to share a couple of our upcoming sessions. You can see today's October 12th. And we've got the idea to launch on Tuesday, the 17th at nine AM. We have online business tools everyone needs. And then on October 24th, and then following up on the 31st, we have some Small Business Intelligence, Size Up 101. There's going to be two separate webinars hosted by Size Up that talks about how to use their program that is sponsored by APS for Arizona on how to use the data analysis tools that they're providing for small business owners. And it's a, the Size Up program delivers data for small businesses that normally are only accessed by large businesses with large budgets. So it's a really cool thing that APS has available to us through Size Up and are excited to have them with us to share how it can be used to benefit small business owners. So with that, I'm gonna, we're gonna jump right into today's session and I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. And we have Curtis Galuso from the Arizona Department of Administration, who is the program manager for the Business One Stop. And he's gonna dive in and tell us about it and walk us through it. If you have questions for Curtis, please post them in the Q and A at the bottom of your screen so they don't get lost among the chat. But a quick question I want to throw everybody that, throw into the chat real quick is, and just put a number in, how many different places or agencies did you go to to get your business started or help your client get their business started? Two, about three, three, four, three, three, two. I'm sure most people on here, it's between two and four. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and let Curtis jump in and talk to you on how to make it a little bit easier.
All right. Thanks much, Robert. And let's see if we can bring all those numbers down to one by the end of this year. Real quick, before I get going, make sure my mic sounds good. Everybody can see my screen.
Yep.
All righty. Very good. All right. So I'm gonna start off here with a little quote from a fellow named Max Dupree. He is the guy that makes those fancy Aaron office chairs. But he says something that I always, has always kind of stuck with me and that's, we cannot become what we want by remaining what we are. So what does that mean in this situation? And please don't respond. This is entirely rhetorical. When you think of working with the government in any sort of process, what's the first thing that comes to mind? And like I said, don't answer. I already know the answer. And the thing is, we wanted to be not that. So Business One Stop, right from the start, tried very hard to bring a new approach, a new way of doing business with government, a new way of doing business with the state, something that we call human centric design. And the goal right from the very beginning was to make everything very easy, low barrier of entry, smooth, simple and modern. So everything that we've done since Business One Stop has launched has been to follow that goal. And I think as we go through the presentation here, you'll kind of see and understand what I mean. So let's get rolling. First things first, who am I? My name is Curtis Galuso. I am the Senior Business Analyst for Business One Stop and I'm currently the Acting Program Manager. While we're working on bringing somebody else in. I work for the Arizona Department of Administration, specifically the Asset Division, where the division that owns the Business One Stop Portal, we're the ones that are responsible for kind of the high level planning and strategic level. And then we connect with all of our agency partners, which we'll talk about as well. But a little bit about me, I've been in tech support, tech for a very long time, starting in tech support at big banks. I've done live web content coordination for AAA video game companies. But also ultimately I ended up finding my way to the public sector back in 2015. And I started there at ASU and I did that because I wanted my work to help people. I found that a lot of what I do was, you know, especially in IT, we find ourselves in silos, kind of talking to ourselves. And we just crank out code and push it out to the world and then somebody does something with it. And I wanted to do something different. I like helping people. I like the satisfaction that once I've completed something, it gets out there. It starts affecting the community right away and I can go out and do things like this and interact with the community and see firsthand how the effort and the hours that I put in and the people that I work with put in turns into positive feedback from my, or from our, from our users. I joined the state in 2019 to continue that goal. I joined the Business One Stop project in 2021. It sounded like an opportunity to really leverage kind of all the things that I've been working on in a career path, both skill and experience wise, to bring something to the state that was really truly groundbreaking and something that could really do good for the people of Arizona. So when the opportunity presented itself, I jumped on it. And from there, I led the original art information architecture sessions and with that data, put together the original system map that our teams used to put together and release Business One Stop to the public. But you're not here to learn about me. So let's keep going. So what is Business One Stop? Well, there it is. Hopefully that makes sense to you. Just kidding. Don't worry. It's hard for us to read too. This is that system map I was talking about. I just like to share it at the top of these presentations, because it kind of really shows all of the work that goes on behind the scenes that we are making sure our users never have to interact with. This is kind of what the process looked like across all the agencies when you're doing the work that you do and going out and connecting people across all the different agencies. This is basically what that looks like in technology form. So the goal was to take this and then turn it into something that people could actually use. But before I go forward, I want to say that this was and continues to be a huge lift by everybody involved, not just me. I'm the one giving the presentation. I get to talk about myself, but I want to make sure that I give a huge shout out and a big thanks to everybody that's worked with us, partners, partner agencies. The folks here at the ACA have been fantastic, along with all of the individual agencies and partners that we work with to put this thing together. So just a big thank you to everybody. But here's what Business One Stop actually is. It's a dynamic, intuitive and secure website designed to help our entrepreneurs plan, start and run and exit their businesses in Arizona. The goal always being to keep it in a singular experience so that you're not having to go across all these different agency lines. And to reduce the amount of in-person interactions, technical expertise or additional fees involved as much as possible. Like I said, it's always been very much about lowering the barrier of entry so that anybody in Arizona who has a great idea can come to Business One Stop, start the planning process right there and maybe walk away with an actual business that they own and are ready to operate and that is registered in the state in relatively little time, sometimes as quickly as 24 hours. So let's talk about how it works. I'll keep it very high level. I do not want to bore everybody to tears. I do need to move this thing out of the way because it is blocking my own words. But as I've said, the goal has always been a low barrier of entry. It is built to leverage the existing EAZ platform. This is the tool that you guys out there in Arizona have probably been using for a very long time to do any of your MVD work. So allowing you to use the same credentials that you log in for there and your other state services again lowers that barrier of entry. Our users can come to Business One Stop and log in right away if they've already set that stuff up. And if not, we'll help them with it. This does utilize a technology called APIs. What we've done is we've tied together all of those state agency backend systems that you saw in that system app using these fast, modern application programming interfaces. And that lets you ultimately access everything in just one place, being Business One Stop. And then we utilize real-time validation as much as possible and anywhere we can in the process. The goal being that we've got these automated checks and business rules that are happening behind the scenes that you never have to see or interact with, but that ultimately keeps your data safe and accurate as we pass it back and forth between the various agencies. This ensures that your data gets to where it needs to be and the people at the agencies that are receiving the data and processing the applications are receiving the applications quickly and that they are accurate. And the very interesting thing there is that in a lot of instances, our users can submit an application and it'll pass through these real-time validation checks and they can receive auto approval approvals right on the spot. Sometimes in less than an hour, you can put through a business application and come back with an approval from your state agency. So taking a paper process that may have in the past taken upwards of, you know, a week or two can now take place in less than an hour in some cases, which is very exciting for us and I'm sure very exciting for people that have to interact with that sort of thing. So why Business One Stop? Well, the needs for Business One Stop were many. As I've said, there were a couple of pain points across both the public facing users and at the state level. Some of these pain points that we heard in the initial interview phases, when we were planning for Business One Stop were things like confusion and uncertainty. And that has to go back to that, you know, discussion of crossing all of those different agency lines. Where do I need to get this application? Where do I need to take it back to? Once I get that approved, where do I need to go next for the next step? And because of that and the fact that there were a lot of different online systems for each of those, it could be discouraging for users, especially folks that were a little less technically apt to step in there. It could be a barrier of entry so high that somebody who has a great business idea ultimately ends up scrapping it or putting it off because they just, you know, can't go through the process. And then from the other side, at the state level, there's a lack of integrated user information. Government is big. There's a lot of different agencies and they do business differently. So there are a lot of times there would be silos of technology and information that would just lead to that, you know, inefficient process that we've talked about. I have here duplicative technology systems. I don't think I wrote that one. I think the last person who put the slide together did. But basically what that means is, is that people were entering information in one place and then having to enter that exact same information someplace else and then maybe even a third time. And that sends people in circles, but more importantly, it means that those individual agencies aren't talking to each other. So their data might not be the same. Somebody might have entered a name without a middle name in one place and with a middle name in some other place. And then when you try to get that data to talk to each other, they might not line up. So that was another one of the challenges that we had to sort of smooth over as we were planning. But just a shout out here to our partner agencies before we move forward. Commerce Authority being a big one. That's Robert and folks here. You guys have been fantastic, very supportive and we appreciate that. We also work very closely with the Secretary of State's Office, the Department of Revenue and the Corporation Commission at the agency level for the actual applications. These are probably the agencies that you guys are familiar with when you're sending people along or starting businesses of your own. Each one of these has their own individual systems, own individual tools and processes. And those were again, things that we needed to kind of get to talk to each other and make sure that the whole thing was nice and streamlined. And we did that in partnership with the Department of Transportation. They're the ones that own the EAZ product that we built on top of that to put together Business One Stop. So big thanks to them as well. So one thing that I mentioned and that is a common theme for Business One Stop is this idea of customer centric design. When Business One Stop started this most recent push to get it out to the public around 2018, 2019, one of the first things that they did was reach out to McKinsey and Company to do a third party assessment. And what we did was we had interviews, not only with agency, business and technical teams, the ones that manage the processes that existed and the development teams that were building those tools at each individual agency. But they also did focus groups with entrepreneurs and individuals in the state that wanted to put together a business. And we got, you know, feedback from all of those different areas. And when it came time to put together the prototype, all of that feedback was paramount to what we were doing. We wanted to make sure that we weren't just building something to, you know, put a patch on a leak. Going back to that very first slide where I said, we want to do things differently. The goal has always been, anytime we encounter the statement, well, that's the way we've always done it. We want to say, well, how could we do it better? And so that was always our goal from the top. And as we put together that prototype, we pulled in user interface and user experience experts who independently audited the process as well. And that's ultimately how we got the original plans to get Business One Stop moving forward. So throughout that technical and planning stage, we had business subject matter experts from all over, as I mentioned, share that voice of the customer along with the agency requirements. That's what I was talking about where we don't just want to know what is being done. We wanted to know what could, or what our customers were saying that could improve the way that we were doing things. So again, that was very important to the, to the development and design process. And then all throughout the tool as we were building it and as we have built it and it's out there now, we've got integrated user engagement tools that help us continuously monitor self audit our user experiences. People are able to give us feedback through surveys. They're able to give us feedback through a messaging app and through our call center. And then of course, we're monitoring metrics and stuff at all times to make sure that people are getting through the processes and if they're falling off at any point where, where is that happening so that we can jump in and address it? And then I'll just push past these other ones as they are kind of repetitive here. But all of that is to say that eventually we were able to bring a new option for Arizona business owners to the public. And on August 24th, 2022, all of our hard work, starting back in 2019, came to fruition and we were able to release Business One Stop. Now, since then, it has been through a number of iterations. It is, it continues to be enhanced. And we add more features, we patch up things that are broken and we, sorry, I kicked forward too soon. And we continue to monitor all those things as I mentioned. So now what we have out there is a tool that's available on desktop and mobile. Business One Stop functions as an alternative to that agency centric paper-based application. So for users, this means that not only were we able to improve access to the formation process, speed up those transactions, but we're able to bring everybody into a single space. That was always the whole point. We've got a dashboard that I'll show you a little bit later. But the goal has always been a business owner or people working with business owners should only ever have to come to one place, log into a single dashboard, see all of their businesses, all of the applications that they have outstanding, any of the changes that they may need to make, payments, et cetera, in a single location. So just to summarize some of the primary functions that we've got out there right now. You can form and manage LLCs, PLLCs partnerships. You can get your tax privilege license from the Department of Revenue. Both the big one and just the withholding only. You can get trade names and trademarks. You can reserve business names with the Corporation Commission. And we've got lots, lots more in the works on our roadmap, but that's just some of the big highlights off the top. And to summarize some of the key factors that make Business One Stop what it is, as we've talked about, that, that idea of customer centric design, that's always at the forefront and it will always continue to be. The idea of cross-agency tools. We have a lot of tools in the system that talk to each other. When you go on Business One Stop and you want to search for a name, you type it into the Business One Stop portal. It actually sends requests across to both the Corporation Commission and the Secretary of State's Office confirming that that name is available or not available at either spot, brings that data back and shows it to you in a single spot. As I mentioned, we have instant approvals. We have embedded the state payment portal within Business One Stop. So you can make your payments right through the system. You don't have to go elsewhere to make payments. That was especially important to folks as when you work with multiple agencies, you ultimately have to end up making payments in three different places. So being able to do it just in one spot through the dashboard has always been very interesting to us and very useful to our end users. The idea of live status updates, Business One Stop and the dashboard is able to reach out to those agencies anytime you're in that dashboard and pull updates back from their backend systems and show it to you right on the spot. And I'll be able to demo that a little bit at the end here. But basically, when you go into Business One Stop and you log into your dashboard, you can always be confident that what you're looking at is the status that would be available to you if you went to any of those other agencies. It is up to date in their system and so it's up to date in our system. And then of course, that dashboard that I've mentioned a couple of times. So let's move on a little bit and we're going to talk about getting to Business One Stop.
Curtis, real quick, and this will tie in where you're going with this. The question we have in the Q and A is I have not heard of EAZ. Can you please explain what that is and how I find it?
Yeah. So it has a couple of different names. It's EAZ, MVD now. They're all the different sort of front-end facing tools that the, or that the Department of Transportation uses for items like getting your driver's license, et cetera. So if you've ever had to log into those portals, it's the same login. And then EAZ is just the front end like login tool. You'll be able to see it when we, when we go through that process. Was there another question? I saw another one pop up.
Yeah, I just asked, I would love to see AZDOR, you know, paying sales taxes integrated into this as well.
Very cool.
In the future.
That is somewhere on the roadmap. I'm not certain exactly where, but yes, it is on our radar. All right. I will get moving forward. So navigating to Business One Stop. First and foremost, you can go to businessonestop.AZ.gov. If you Google Business One Stop in Arizona, it should just pull up right at the top. We are a .gov, which means we usually bubble up to the top of the searches anyway. But once you're here, you have the option of either clicking the get started button or the login button. And again, I'll do a demo here at the end and show you this stuff actually in action. But the planning tools there don't require a login. Those are all available to anybody. All you have to do is click get started. That includes items like the checklist that Robert mentioned at the top, as well as some other tools like fee calculators, name checks, et cetera. And then if you click that actual login button there, that'll take you through the process of getting into the Business One Stop portal. So here's what that EAZ front-end login looks like. And I'll go through the process of logging through that a little bit later when I do the demo. It's real fast, real easy, takes very little effort. And like I said, if you've already got a login existing, doesn't require any additional effort other than just signing in. So the Business One Stop portal uses that EAZ tool to provide a secure connection to our entrepreneurs. And as I mentioned, this is the same login that many of your residents are going to use to manage your MVD accounts. So once you log in, you will land here. This is the Business One Stop landing page. The goal has always been, as I mentioned, to have that consolidated space. And so this is the landing page where we bring folks in. Each of these buttons will take you to different sections of the tool. The planning button there will take you off to that spot that I mentioned earlier that has the fee calculator, et cetera. You can also get there directly through the estimate section there. You can use the link here to jump into your dashboard. If you hit start a new business, you will activate the wizard that will start walking you through the process of figuring out what applications you need to file, depending on what your needs are. And we'll look about, look at that a little bit here in a moment as well. And then that single specialty applications button will open up all the individual applications. This is things. If you already have a business and you don't need to do a new business application, but you want to get a TPT license or request a trade name, trademark, pull a certificate, a good standing, those applications are all in there. So I'm going to walk through the process here real quick. Step one is the plan section. As I mentioned, this is the section of the tool that's available when you're either logged in or logged out. And just looking at this here, just a note, we are actually actively working on upgrading the UI and user experience for this. We've got some great folks over at A dot working on that. So in coming releases, this will actually look much prettier and be a little easier to navigate, but all of the tools are still there. So just to give you a quick run through of what this looks like. Over on the left-hand side there, you see that green box. That's the plan section. The what will I need? That's going to pull up that business checklist that Robert mentioned. It actually scrolls way down there further than I have a screenshot of. There's tons of good information in there. You can click any of those and they'll pop you out to a link. And then you'll be able to come back to Business One Stop and continue along. The types of business structures is another link out to the ACA website. Just a tool that our users can use to figure out what type of business options are out there for them if they're less familiar. Decide your name. That will actually go into the name reservation tool and we'll look at that here in a second as well. And then the startup costs, as I mentioned. So just jumping down to the name reservation tool, this is one of the things that connects to our partner agencies. So you can come in here logged in or not. You can say, I want to decide my name. You can type in whatever that name is. Here we can see Hot Pocket Records LLC. And then you can search it and it will send a data request out to the Corporation Commission and Secretary of State backend systems. And it'll bring that data back for you. It'll tell you whether or not it is available. If it is, you can start the process of reserving it with the Corporation Commission right there. You can also hit that get started button and take that name straight into starting a new business application. Get your business formed. And if you decide you want to keep searching, you can hit continue name search there. Next, we have the startup, I'm sorry, the fee calculator. This is again connected to our agency partners. We get their fee data from their systems. And all of that gets pulled in and each of these items has little pop outs. So if you select LLC or tax privilege, more options will pop out to make sure that you're getting a correct estimate. And then when you get all the way to the bottom, hit estimate cost, it'll pop up and it'll tell you what fees will be required in order to get your business set up. The interesting thing being that Business One Stop does not charge any additional fees on top of what the agencies charge for basic formation. So Business One Stop is essentially a free tool. The charges only end up being the application costs that you would have to pay anyway. Moving on, starting a business, this is where we'll talk about our journey wizard, kind of the step-by-step menus, the embedded payments, auto approvals, et cetera. So this is that wizard that I was talking about. Again, UI and UX opportunities where we are working on making things look better. But the tool is currently functional. The wizard is one of the most useful things that our users tell us about. When we reach out and talk to them, it's very easy to follow along. Say, for example, I want to start an LLC. I'll click LLC on the side. It will then advance me to the next screen where it's going to tell me what type of application I need to It will then advance me to the next screen where it's going to tell me what type of application I need to get started. Do I want to get a name? Yes or no? That can spit out that name reservation flow that we looked at earlier. Or if you already have a name set up, it will just let you pass right by it. It will also ask you questions about whether or not you have employees to determine whether or not you need a full tax license or just a withholding only. And there's more options as well. I've only got a couple of screens here just to show kind of how the flow works. But the idea is that a user doesn't have to come into Business One Stop understanding what applications they need to fill out. They only need to know that I want to start a business and I want to start this type of business, which, as I mentioned earlier, there's a tool to help them find the business structures as well. But once they start that journey, the wizard is going to guide them through to the end. It's going to create those applications for them. It's going to save them in their dashboard and help walk them through the process of getting them pushed through the system and ultimately approved. But just a quick look at this, again, I won't spend a ton of time on these slides because we're going to do a little demo at the end of the actual live product. But this is what the applications look like. Once you've moved through that wizard and the applications start flowing, you can see on the left-hand side that you can move through the different applications by clicking. And they will let you know when they're completed with a green checkbox. We've got, as I mentioned, those validation checks occurring all throughout the system to make sure that the page that you're on is fully complete. As we can see here, the required fields, it'll tell you if you put in something inaccurate, it'll pop up and say no. And if you get all the way to the review screen at the end and you somehow still haven't gotten something correct, we've got little bubbles that will be green or red to let you know whether or not you need to go back and fix something before you submit. And just some animations there. Another example here of the power of the Business One Stop tool is that you can access information that's already on file, that's already out there. Because Business One Stop is connected to the backend systems of our partnering agencies. For items like statutory agent, you can actually go in through Business One Stop. You can perform the search, it'll go over to the Corporation Commission and pull that information back for you. Allowing you again to do as much of your work as possible in a single space without having to jump to different websites, login over on the other end, figure out what you need, jump back. We wanted our users to avoid that as much as possible. So anytime we hit one of those pain points, we would figure out exactly what we needed to do to bring that functionality into Business One Stop. And then at the very end, as I mentioned, the application review screen will run you through a series of built-in data validations. They'll let you know whether the information you have entered meets the criteria required to go across to the other agencies and get auto-approved. And if not, it'll stop you from submitting your application. Again, this is just to avoid that unnecessary back and forth. And then we've got a secure digital signature in there as well, help reduce the need for in-person visits to agency offices. You can sign directly in Business One Stop and your application is on its way. As I mentioned a little further on, another very important component of Business One Stop and one of the things that people really wanted was the ability to make their payments directly within Business One Stop. Had we done all of this work and still at the end you had to go to your email and load up four different links and pay in, you know, all of those different places, it's still not a smooth, enjoyable process. So pulling the state payment portal into the Business One Stop tool and connecting it to all of our different agency partners and systems allows you to make those credit card, debit card, ACH payments just seamlessly right in the tool. You can do it right from your dashboard. I can show you that later as well. And as I mentioned earlier, unlike other products and services out there in the public space, Business One Stop doesn't charge a fee to use any of our tools. So your fees are always just going to be the application fees from the agencies. I'm going to touch on instant approvals again. I know that I already talked about it, but this is something that we really want to drive home. Business One Stop is built to make the process fast. We don't want our users to spend days, 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 sometimes weeks, sitting and waiting for applications to come back. So any opportunity, we had to pull business rules into the system and run it through sort of an automated check so that if you submit your application and the data meets certain criteria, our system can say, yep, that person is good to go, approve you right on the spot. You can go back to your dashboard. And in most cases, for items like LLCs, trade names, some of the smaller applications that don't require manual review, that turnover can be less than 24 hours and in some cases, less than an hour, which is just incredibly powerful. That's usually the thing when we're talking to people, they say, as I mentioned at the top, working with government can take a long time and it can be clunky. And so the idea that you can log on to a government website, type in a few things, submit your application, make your payment and have everything done within an hour is usually mind-blowing to them. And the questions are usually, how did we accomplish that? To which we keep our trade secrets to ourselves. Not really, it's a neat thing here. It's APIs. All right, here is our dashboard. There have been enhancements to this as well. We'll see the live dashboard a little bit later and the way that it looks. But the dashboard provides entrepreneurs with complete real-time status for your business or businesses. You can have more than one business within Business One Stop. That is a functionality that we added a little bit after release and it is live now. So users that have one business, that have five businesses or somebody that manages 100 businesses for somebody else can have access to them within Business One Stop. And then, of course, it displays the individual agency application lines here. The interesting thing being that we have these live action buttons that are dynamic. They change based on the needs of the individual. So if you're, if you look down at the bottom there, that application is not completed. So it's going to say, continue filing. If you submit that filing, that button is going to change to Pay Now. It's going to tell you when it's approved. It's going to tell you when there are documents and correspondence in there, as you can see all there. But the important thing is, again, that this is all in a single space. You can sort it. We just wanted to make people's lives very easy. That was always the whole point. We didn't want you to even have to go to multiple spaces within our tool. Once you've got your applications out there, you can go to your dashboard and you can live off that until you need to submit a new application. Next up, we're going to talk about managing a business. So this is businesses that have been created. They are now out there in the ether and you need tools to manage them, for lack of a better word. You can see that on the left-hand side here, the panel has turned into Run now. It's no longer Plan or Start. The Run option is letting you know the different options that you have for your business. And just to summarize some of those things, for items like LLCs, PLLCs, you can come into Business One Stop to make your amendments. You can request all the different certificates that they require. If you need to perform inline statutory agent acceptance, we can do that through the system. That means a statutory agent can log into Business One Stop, accept their assignment right within the tool and push that across to the system. That was a really big, important one, especially to the folks over at the Corporation Commission. So again, a big shout out to them. We did a lot of hard work with them to get that one out there in live. That one's pretty cool. And then the other thing that we did with them is we pulled in the ability to manage businesses that were created outside of Business One Stop. So that means you don't only have to use Business One Stop for businesses that you started in Business One Stop. If you've owned a business for 20 years and it's registered with the Corporation Commission, Business One Stop can go get that information from their system and pull it in and you can start using our tool to manage it. You can also do similar things around partnerships. This is relatively new functionality and it's something that we continue to enhance. To this day, we're working hard with the Secretary of State's office. But right now, you can create all forms of domestic and foreign partnerships. I don't think that's all forms. You can create many forms of domestic and foreign partnerships. There's a few more that are still in the works and that will be released in the coming months. You can make amendments to those partnerships. You can file your annual reports. These are all things that we are continuing to work on that will be live probably by the end of the fiscal year. That's what we're shooting for. Things like requesting certificates and statements there, notice of service process change. Again, the Business One Stop team is not done. We are still out there cranking every day, putting new functionality out for our users, enhancing the functionality that we have. Look here at critical components to keep our users progressing. This is basically the tools that we have built within Business One Stop that are outside of the realm of business formation tools. These are tools that actually help people use Business One Stop. So in order to support our users, we have built into the platform a virtual customer service representative. You can go into the chat bot and ask it various questions. We are always working to enhance that. So anytime anybody has any suggestions, we can run that through the ladder and get that into the virtual CSR, get that updated out there. We also have a live call center that's staffed during regular business hours. If you need help, the wait times at that call center are usually less than one minute and most people are off the phone in under six, which is again, pretty impressive when you're calling to get help on a tool like this. Normally, people expect to sit and wait for, you know, 20, 25 minutes. We've got agents sitting there ready with SLAs to make sure that you get the information you need and get off the phone and get back to working on whatever it is you need to do. So I've got the number there. It is available at the bottom of the page within the portal. It is also available on our website, businessonestop.az.gov. So what's next for Business One Stop? As I like to say, the job of serving people is never done. That is to say that the Business One Stop team and all its partners are working hard every day, digging through the data, listening to the voice of our customers so that we can continue providing refinements and enhancements to our existing processes, build new features and tools to help you do what you do and finding new partners to help us expand our reach and support the people of Arizona. All of that, again, is to say that all of you are the reason that we do what we do. It's the reason I come to work every day and it's the reason that I love working on a tool like this. So thank you all so much. And that brings me to demo time. But if anybody have any questions, we can do some questions first.
All right, we got a few questions in here.
Yeah.
Does it save my session if I get interrupted?
Yes, Business One Stop saves along the way. If we go back to that page where the application is, let me just jump back to it here. We'll run backwards. Yeah, this was a long presentation. How did you guys sit through this? So right here, as you can see, as you're walking through the application process, each of these individual tabs will save as you go. So you can get to the bottom, you can save and move forward. You can walk away. You don't have to complete that application in one step. Same thing goes if you've, you know, gotten through the principal address and, you know, your internet goes out. Everything that you've done prior to that is still going to be saved. You can go into your dashboard, find that application and pick it right back up through the action button and it'll pull you right back to the spot that you need to start working on. That answer your question?
Things I did. So the next question is, is one-on-one help available to help walk you through this process? I already have questions about some of the questions on the screenshots.
Yep, our call center is trained in the tool. They have all kinds of user guides available to them to help folks walk through. So if you really need somebody to kind of sit down with you and talk you through the process, they are subject matter experts. They can answer your questions. They can help you get from screen to screen. And also I mentioned the user guide, if you go onto our website, there is a link that I'll show you when I pull the demo up where you can download our PDF user guide and you can follow through the steps there as well.
All right, the next question is, when individuals type in the name search and include LLC in the name, does that factor in that the Corporation Commission will add LLC to the end of any created LLC? Not sure if that makes sense.
No, I understand what they're saying. No, the name search, if you're searching for an LLC, it requires the LLC to put on the end. But if you create your business, no, ACC, it won't append an LLC to the end of it. So you won't be Hot Pockets Records LLC, LLC. It'll just be Hot Pockets Records LLC.
All right. Another one. Does why no options for corporation status or S corp?
Yep, those are much further down in the roadmap. One of the things that we wanted to make sure we did early when we were releasing this project or product is that it focused on the kind of mom and pop folks, people that needed help getting into businesses, startups, sole proprietorships, smaller LLCs, that kind of thing. There are bigger tools available to those corporate filings that we can take a stab at in the future. But we wanted to make sure that we supported kind of the broad base of our users at a mom and pop level to start with.
Excellent. And the next one says, is this a place to get all certificates and business information? How about W9s and other forms?
So right now, from the tax side of things for DOR, we've just got the TPT and the withholding only. There are plans, again, further down the roadmap to have, to start pulling in additional functionality from the Department of Revenue. Most of the things that you can do through the Corporation Commission for LLCs, PLLCs, you can do through our system, I think actually all of the things at this point for those smaller business structures, all those certificates you can pull in. And we're actually actively working on adding all of that stuff for the partnerships right now.
And here's, here's a question that you'll love. How private is the information entered into Business One Stop? Which agencies have direct access to non-anonymized data from our account?
That's a great question. And something that was very important to us at the beginning and something that I want to note is that Business One Stop doesn't store any data. All of our data comes to us across the APIs. So once you've submitted an application, your data goes out only to the agency that is relevant. So in the instance of an LLC application, any of that information that you put in will be stored locally only while you're doing the application. And then once you send it off, it crosses those APIs and Business One Stop forgets about it until it's time to pull that data back from their system and then we do it again through the APIs. So your data is always compartmentalized. When it's traveling across those channels, the state has very powerful tools for web security, CloudFlare, things like that, that all protect the tool. And then each individual agency will be the only ones looking at your data.
Okay, lots of other questions for now. So I say we jump into that demo.
All right, I'm going to scroll to the end here and pull this up. Before I jump into the demo, if you want to follow along at all, or if you just want to get up on the website and see, kind of poke things around, you can either scan that QR code there and it'll take you right to it or you can enter that URL. And if for some reason you want to send an angry letter, there's my email. So let's go ahead and pull this up. I'm going to follow the link. All right, can you guys see that? All right, so here is our website, businessonestop.az.gov. I gotta grab my phone here. It'll help me log in with two-factor. But we'll take a look at the website here real quick. So when you land, the first slider will always be this one that I showed a little bit earlier in the presentation. You can follow the Get Started link here. Or you can follow it up here at the top if the slider has progressed past and you don't want to go through the process clicking. So I'm just going to click up here. And as I mentioned, this stuff is available to people that aren't logged in. So you saw that it went through the EAZ system and just let you pass right in without any kind of logging in. I made a liar of myself. It's trying to log me back into the other side. All right, if it does that again, I'll just get logged in and then I'll have a chat with A dot about why that's happening. But here is the login process. So here is our EAZ. I'm going to go back there real quick. This is the landing page that you'll get to if you're signing in for any of your AZMVD Now work. You can either sign up here if you don't have an account and that'll walk you through the process. Or if you have one already, or if you access it through your Google account, you can do that. I'm going to use my sort of pseudo sign-in here. This is my Samantha sample. So I've already got my password in there. It's stored for me anytime I come back. I drop in here to sign in. And we've got two factors set up on that. Again, we want to keep our users as safe as possible. So I've got it set up to send a code to my phone. I'm going to do that real quick. Take that out so it doesn't try to log me in. All right, that came real fast. Three, five, eight, six, four, two. And that'll get me logged right in. All right. So here's our plan page and we're going to pretend we got here logged in directly. And then we're going to have that talk later. And then we're going to have that talk later. So here is our small business checklist. This is what Robert mentioned at the top. We've got this built into the system. Fully integrated. You can go to any one of these things and get information directly from the various websites. So in the instance that you need information on EIDs, it'll actually take you straight over to the IRS website. You can get that information there. We've got all of the different business characterizations. This one should pull up. Yep. This is the NAICS or NAICS codes. This is what the Department of Revenue uses for a lot of their different reporting and I don't know exactly what to call it. They use it for all of their different backend systems for making sure that you're paying taxes correctly. So those tools are available to folks. We've got the business structures that we talked about a little bit earlier. This is the Commerce Authority website. And this will walk you through all of the different types of businesses that you can set up. And all these just pop up in different tabs so you can keep your business one stop open. And then we've got a shortcut straight to that business one stop or business structures. But let's go ahead and say that we want to figure out a name. So here's our decide your name. I'm going to call this. I have a really awesome idea. Now, because I didn't stick anything at the end there, it's probably going to tell me it's available right off the top. If I go LLC, it's going to further search a little bit, make sure that that's good as an LLC. And now let's say I'm Home Depot. Well, Home Depot isn't available. So it's going to tell me, let's take a look at existing business names that are similar. So I can pull up all kinds of different businesses that are similar to the one that I looked at. It pulls this data straight from the Corporation Commission systems. And I can go ahead and see, well, there's all this kind of different Home Depot stuff. So maybe I don't want to be Home Depot. Which gives you the opportunity to go back and say that I have an awesome idea. LLC. Yep. There we go. We know that it's good to go. So from here, I could continue the search and keep looking around as I mentioned, or I could go right into get started. And before I get started, I want to pop up the fee estimator. We'll walk through that real quick and then we'll start looking at the actual business applications. All right. So as I mentioned, this pulls data from our various partners. So let's say I want to start an LLC. I can see now that I get a little alert here. Beware that your new LLC may require additional fees for newspaper publication, which is based on your stat agent's physical address. And if I go to partnership, it does not give me that. So we're pulling live information. It's going to walk you through different stuff depending on what you want to do. So I'm going to say LLC and you can see that it pops out under there the ability to add documents. Do I want to add a supporting documents? Yes, I do. Now it's going to tell me there's additional processing time based on that. And those processing times can come with different fees. I'm just going to say no for simplicity. Do I need a transaction privileged license? If I'm not sure, I've got these tool tips right here that will pop up and give me guidance. These tool tips exist all throughout the Business One Stop experience and we're continuing to add more every day. I do see a question popped up if we want to pause.
We'll come to the very end of the demo. That's a good question for you.
Sounds good. All right. So let's say I need a TPT license. We can see that it now pops out additional questions. So I can enter my character of business here. I can enter where my business is going to be located. This all has a bearing on the final outcome. Again, I'm just going to say no for simplicity. If I want employees, that's going to be the difference between withholdings and that makes some changes as well. And do we want to reserve trade names or trademarks as part of this process? Let's say I wanted to do both and estimate my costs. And it's going to tell me that based on my entries, it will cost me roughly $110 to set up an LLC with no supporting documents, but with a trade name and a trademark. And so if I wanted to go ahead and move forward to starting a business, I could just do that right there. Which brings us to our wizard. So this is the start of the process to get your applications moving forward. Here you can pick directly any of the applications that you want to start. Also, if you just want to do a trade name or trademark, you can do them separately. But I'm going to just stick to the LLC because it's the most robust flow. So it's going to ask me if I want to link an existing EAZ account. If I wanted to do that, I could get that set up here. I'm sorry, this is the Ecorp account. So if I've already got a connection over at the Corporation Commission, I can enter those credentials here and connect my account directly. This is a production site, so I don't want to make any weird connections here. But essentially this is how you connect to your existing Ecorp account and start pulling that data across if you already have businesses over there. Or if you want to make sure that you can send your data back and forth between those two. So I'm just going to say a general partnership here. That one doesn't require a connection and I'm going to continue. Which brings us to our business name. So I have an awesome idea. I'm going to say search and it's going to tell me you need to enter one of these appendings. So general partner can either end in I have an awesome idea GP or I can have an awesome idea, general partnership. I'll go with GP and it'll append it for me. And I have an awesome ideas available, so I can move forward. I'll hit continue. Wizard's going to ask, ask me if I need to set up a tax license or withholding. If I'm unsure, it can ask me some questions to determine which one I need. If I want none, I can say no, but I'm going to say yes, I want the full TPT license with withholding because we want to see what that looks like on the dashboard when we're done. And you can see because I've chosen that, it's going to give me some information that comes directly from the Department of Revenue, letting me know just some important information based on my selection. And once I've read that and understand, I go ahead and click continue. We can see down here that our application has been started successfully. So we'll give that a second to load here. And we'll note that our business information is already done. That was the first thing that we did. Here we are at our application. Here are the steps that I talked about and the navigation between them on the side. But what I'm going to do now is click up here to Business One Stop and come to our dashboard or our landing page. So as I mentioned earlier, you can go into the different sections here, but what I want to do is go to my dashboard. And I want to confirm that the application that I just started and somehow lost my session as somebody asked me earlier is there. So it's going to spend a second and pull some information across the APIs. And I can see right here that I have an awesome idea has already been set up. And if I open this up, it's going to show the different licenses or applications that I have pending currently. So we can see since I told it, I wanted a tax information app, it pulled that app up as well. And I can continue filing either of those directly right from the dashboard. So say I'm not ready to finish my general partnership filing, but I know that I have or I know what I need to do for tax purposes, I can continue filing from here. And it'll jump me right back to that application. I won't walk through the entire application process for both of these, especially the TPT license is a little beefy, takes a little bit of time. But the important thing to note is that once you get through to the end and we get to that review page, you have an opportunity before you send anything to recheck everything. It'll perform automatic address validation. It will validate that you have made your entries correctly. And then ultimately you will be able to go through the process of signing. And that's about as much demo as we can do in the production environment without actually submitting live data to the agencies. So I think this is probably a good spot to take some questions.
All right, got a few questions in here. So the first one that I said, whole offer says, I want to start a service-based business for pet training, but I really don't know what I need other than registering the name. Is this a good place for me to do that? Or is this for other things?
No, if you have an idea for a business and you're not exactly sure what steps you need to take or what sort of structures you need to set up in order to get that business moving forward. Say, I don't know if I need an LLC. I don't know if I need a partnership or if I could just get by with a sole proprietorship. All of those tools are going to be in the plan section. All of these different resources are going to be able to answer those questions for you. And if for any reason this stuff doesn't make sense, or it's just too overwhelming, you can contact our call center and they can walk you through those questions as well.
Yeah, you can also reach out to the ACA, to my team. Or there's a number of service providers on here. You have SCORE, Small Business Development Centers, Local First and others that can help you with that as well. So there's a number of no-cost options for you to help you, guide you through that process.
Yep, I would say that that sort of business is kind of exactly what we're looking for or what we're targeting with Business One Stop. The only things that we're really not focusing on at this point are the larger corporations that somebody asked a question on earlier. And that's something that we are actively in planning stages for.
Says, can the information that is inputted be changed as the business needs change?
Yes. As I mentioned, we have amendment processes built in. So if we come down here, I don't know if I'll be able to do any without having a live business on here. Yeah, I don't think so. But if you need to make amendments, like file an article amendment, make changes to your business structure, your business ownership, change your address, change your phone number, who, all that stuff, that can all be done the same way that you could do it through the ACC. Those tools are built directly into the portal. They'll, they'll be on that run panel on the left-hand side. Once you actually have a live approved business in Business One Stop.
So that's kind of ties into that, that question too. It says, sometimes our clients make mistakes on filings. Does the client have to go to the agency to make the changes amendments or can they do that here in the Business One Stop?
Nope, the Business One Stop, if the client makes an entry that passes the auto approval process, like let's say they make a mistake in their name, they put a typo. They can come back into Business One Stop and file an amendment with us to make that change. They don't have to go to the agency. But let's say they make a mistake that would affect the approval of the actual business. Then the agency, once it gets that data, will actually reject it. That'll come back to your dashboard. And when you're on here in your business, instead of saying continue filing on the right-hand side, it will show you that your application was rejected. It can give you rejection reasons and then you can click your next action item right in there to get stuff fixed.
So how well does it handle when AZ CorpCom rejects your application?
That's a A and B of the, the question that we just answered. The rejection system is built into Business One Stop. So if for any reason, an application goes out of Business One Stop, doesn't meet the auto approval criteria, it will go into their manual review queue and the same people that would look at it if you submitted it through Ecorp or if you walked in there and handed them a paper application, those same folks are going to review it. Then they make their decision and then that gets pushed back to us once they've done it.
All right, says, I get an error message. No click through to find answers. Who can help me resolve this?
If there's any sort of error that you're getting along the way, I'd recommend contacting the call center. Like I said, you'll probably get somebody relatively quickly. They understand what the screens look like. And if you are encountering something that is completely stopping you from moving forward, they can escalate that to us as a bug and it's something that we can work on to fix.
See, it says, God, most common issue we have is the business owner doesn't accept statutory agent for seven days.
Yep, that was the most common issue that was causing a lot of rejections when we first released Business One Stop. And one of the things you can see here is the authorized entities and users. That's actually part of that functionality. You can come into Business One Stop as a statutory agent and accept your appointment directly within the portal. So once that statutory agent is assigned as part of the application process, it will send an email. They put it in the email of the person that is going to be the stat agent, if they're not going to be their own stat agent. They'll get a notification saying, hey, come log in. You can accept that directly within our system. They can click the button, accept that assignment and that moves that process forward. That was a big one from the Corporation Commission. We worked, they really wanted us to get it up there because it was causing a lot of their rejections. And being able to kind of automate a lot of that process really sped things up for them. So yeah, good question.
One last question, and I'm not sure on this question. So all right, so you may have to respond a little bit more. Says, is there data slash resources for online consulting businesses? I think my answer to that is probably in the planning phase or going directly to our checklist. The ACA checklist to look for those resources. Depending on what data resources you're, you're wanting.
Yep, the, any resources that we have on that would be available through the planning section. Usually a consulting business, you're probably going to be, if it's just you, you're going to be looking at either a sole proprietorship or an LLC. Those are structures that we manage within the system. In terms of how you actually get things set up and you know, questions you might have, then yeah, that's going to be those tools through the ACA and through our planning section.
And that is the last question we have right now. So we are we scheduled an hour and a half just to be safe, but we're past an hour. So I know a lot of people are probably needing to get back to other stuff. Now we do have another question pop in there. Just a thank you. Thank you, Erica. But you can always reach out to Curtis if you have questions about it, or if you're running challenges or you ran into errors, you can also contact me and I can pass that directly on to Curtis and the team or do the call center. The call center can, can pass that on. Occasionally call center might tell you to contact the ACA. And if they do that, please let us know when you call. So we can pass that back around because it shouldn't happen too much. But occasionally it does. So we are all working together to help make this as best as possible. And so over time is you provide feedback from using it or working with clients to use it. That feedback is very helpful to us on things you're seeing on your end, on a service provider end. So we hope this was a beneficial webinar for you. Glad everybody could be with us. So with that, we will go ahead and wrap up. Again, this is being recorded and we will have it in our content library. Hopefully tomorrow. It's where you can view it, share it, download PDF version of the slide deck as well. So that'd be a great resource. But again, thank you Curtis for being on and sharing this information. And I thank all the participants for spending their lunch hour with us. And we hope everyone has a great day and we also hope to see you at our next bootcamp on Tuesday morning. Until then, everybody have a great weekend.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thanks for having me, Rob.